A 20th regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to order. We are conducting a remote meeting using Zoom. So at this time, I would ask that we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, well, we get started before the citizens' comments. At the last meeting, I think someone got quote unquote kicked out of the meeting inadvertently. If that happens, if you disappear, if you lose your connection, go back to the link that Alita sent and click on it, and then you can be readmitted. Alita will keep an eye on that during the regular meeting, and then Brooke can help us out if anything happens during executive session, correct, Brooke?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, so public comments, I received one from Trish Childs. She is from Bolton. And she writes, what is the school district doing to actively plan for remote learning needs in the future? Most research is showing that we may need to implement a shelter-in-place option in the fall slash winter when the virus has a second wave. With the school year coming to a close in less than two months, how are we engaging with teachers to ensure that they are ready and trained to deliver the live instruction remotely? In my correspondence with Ms. Childs, I let her know that I would just read the statement, but I know that the questions that she is asking will be addressed at some point during tonight's presentation. Okay, so we were informed that we have to reschedule the presentation by the auditor because of a family crisis. And at this point, I will turn it over to Brooke, who can introduce our guests.
Sure, thank you so much. Yes, and we're sending out our very best to our auditor right now. So the elementary school administration is here tonight to present. We had talked about the amount of surveying that we're doing, the types of questions that we're exploring, the data that we're looking into to help us become consistently better and improve, because this is also brand new for us. And so we decided that we would, because it was too many to put all principals together on one night, we thought we would break it out. So we're having elementary present this evening, and then we'll have the middle and high present at our next school committee meeting. So tonight, the three folks that are representing the elementary schools, you see Principal Malcaren there from Center, Principal O'Shea from Mary Rowlinson, and where's Joel? Oh, there he is.
Hi, Joel.
Joel, thank you, bottom of my screen, sorry. And Principal Bates, of course, from the Florence Sawyer campus. And we have Scott Blanchard as well here from Mary Rowlinson. And Dr. Maguire worked really closely with all of them as we looked at the survey data. So I think to make sure that everybody was calibrated. And I just would want to say, though, as much as we looked for consistency, because we always do with everything that we do in the school district, we also strive, and I know I've said this 100 times, but I think it bears repeating again tonight, we always strive to allow each school the autonomy that it needs for its own community. So because sometimes they're doing different things, marginally different, and they're looking to try to glean different information. So even though the surveys were kind of the same, they were all a little bit different because each one of them was looking for something a little bit different. So with that, then I'll turn it over to Dr. Maguire, and he can tee up the administration.
Great, so I'm just gonna need my ability to share my screen. That's disabled right now, so I think, I don't know who's hosting the meeting, but I need that.
I am, and it must have been with the upgrade, it doesn't allow me to do that, so I'm gonna turn the host over to you for right now.
Okay.
And then when we get all done, you'll turn it over to Brooke. You're all set.
Great. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I know that a couple of weeks ago, we talked, you know, from a 30,000-foot vantage point in terms of the surveying that we were doing across the district. And at the time, we hadn't finished all of the surveys across the district, and we were attempting to kind of stagger them somewhat, as well as get some consistency. So based on your feedback from the last meeting, what we decided to do was kind of pool our elementary principals and our middle school principals, and then at the high school level, the high school was the last to get its surveys out to families. And then ultimately, I worked with Kim Early in the Teaching and Learning Department so that we could create one and get one out to students. So those principals will come to our next meeting to report out it on that level, based on your feedback. But today, Principal Malcaren, Principal Bates, Principal O'Shea, and Assistant Principal Blanchard are here to talk specifically about the results and how they surveyed their learning communities and families. So I'm just gonna tee this up before Principal Malcaren talks first, but at this level, we sent surveys out to all families in grades K through 5 in all three towns. They consisted of multiple choice questions, simple questions like what grade are your students in? And, you know, a variety of multiple choice questions that spoke to their experiences with remote learning, and then a variety of open response questions that allowed for people to provide feedback. And so after they present, I'll then talk a little bit about the takeaways. And Kathy, that question that you have from our community member, I'll hopefully be able to address some of those things with the takeaways from these surveys, because they're certainly informing our path forward as we look towards the summer and as we look towards the fall. So in all of these surveys, we tried to remain pretty consistent across all three towns. So the focus was on in terms of time on learning, as presented guidance from the Department of Education. The engagement level of students, keep in mind, too, that because our elementary students are not on that one-to-one model, it's not as easy to track the engagement level as we can in the Google Classroom in grade 6 through 12. The types of activities that students are participating in, and the resources that they are and were using. And then really to get some feedback on the benefits of our remote learning plan, and ultimately the challenges that we're faced, so that that can inform us moving forward. And then certainly suggestions from people for us to inform how we enhance our remote learning model. So just to give you an overview of that. And so with that, I'll turn on the next slide. Principal Malcaren will talk about some of the data received in the feedback at the Center School.
Great, thank you, Dr. Maguire. So we sent our survey out shortly after Hale sent theirs out. Kyle and I felt, Kyle Gray and I felt that it was important not to send them at the exact same time, as we didn't want parents to sort of, who have students at both buildings, to lose the surveys in the shuffle. So ours went out second. We had 110 responses. You know, as far as the number of students that that captures, I'm not quite sure. I know that a lot of the families that responded have multiple children in the school. So approximately 40% of those respondents reported that, you know, their time on learning for their student was more than two hours a day. And approximately 50% of the respondents indicated that, you know, it takes them about an hour, if not more, a day to support their child. So we're seeing, you know, some consistency around that. There was very few responses that it was less than an hour. It was mostly, you know, either an hour or more than two hours per day. So overall, we're feeling like engagement is strong. You know, this is not, we don't have the metrics that we would have if we had one-to-one. However, you know, based on what the teachers are reporting back to, you know, Ms. Nealon and I, and our school counselors about following up with families, we're feeling pretty good about where we're at. And again, engagement is a range, I feel like, at this point. You know, there's the saying that, you know, we're all in the same storm, but we're in different boats. So when we meet, you know, a student's need in the school day, that looks different student to student, and it's the same when we're working with families. So I think we're taking that into consideration. So, but again, overall, we feel like engagement is strong, as we have very few families that we're still following up with to increase engagement, at least at the administrative level. The teachers are doing an amazing job working with families. So video meetings with teachers, online programs were sort of favored over self-directed and multi-day projects by parents when they talked about what the preferred platforms or preferred assignments were. So, you know, obviously, starting with strengths of what's happening, as we always do, and looking at the positive aspects that we're seeing. And these are summarized based on the comments that people responded with. You know, so there's been an evolution, which I think is a really positive aspect of remote learning, that the relationships between home and school around problem solving and prioritized learning for their students has certainly increased. And again, parents who are feeling either, you know, like they have a large work, you know, situation to deal with, and how do I support my student? Or my student might have some needs, how do I support them? So we've really seen a cool evolution, and I think it's been very supportive of students. Parents also responding that the video conference lessons and the community building activities that they're doing, along with those pre-recorded lessons by our teachers, not ones necessarily found on YouTube, but the one that, you know, the one that our teachers are doing, are really impactful, as they can re-watch the lesson, or they can access it at a different time if they're not available to watch it live. So, and families have also noticed an increase in student independence as remote learning has continued, with their kids' ability to access the platforms, they're seeing some good growth there. That's a little bit different at the youngest level, K-1, 2, certainly K-1, where it takes a lot more parent involvement in order to support the students on that. So, and again, there was a number of notes regarding that, you know, the positive aspect of this is the increased family time, along with gratitude for the efforts of our staff. So I felt like that was all great feedback and builds upon what we're sort of doing. You know, as far as the challenges go, we certainly saw that there was a, you know, a balance, you know, balancing act in every home, as it is in our home. And I'm sure, you know, other administrators, and certainly for the teachers, too, they can feel the same way, that, you know, balancing parent work schedules and keeping the kids motivated, which that changes day to day, too. You know, on a day where it's a little bit more gloomy outside, while you're inside, you think you have more time to do work. However, you know, a student's spirits may not be up, you know, on a day where it's, you know, beautiful like today. You know, the multiple technology platforms that parents have to support their students to access, and again, going back to the younger students needing assistance, that can be a challenge certainly for families. And then the overall emotional response to missing their teacher, their classroom, the school routines, you know, even if a student's not really having the best morning at home, but they get on that bus, they drive to school, they see some friends, they come off the bus, they give somebody a high five, a staff member, they get to their class, and sort of that's all forgotten. But it's much harder to transition into a school day when it's in your home, just like, you know, for us, it's a little bit harder to transition into the workday, you know, and coming and going from my home office directly into the mix of family. A lot of families are doing the same thing, and our students are as well. It's not that routine that holds up a lot of our normalcy is missing. So that's a big theme from our families about what the challenges are.
All right, thank you, Ross. Do we want to wait questions to the end?
I was gonna ask if that, let's hear everybody's presentation, and then you may have some summary remarks, Todd, and then I'd like to open it up for questions.
Okay, thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
So from here, we'll move on to the Sawyer School, and Principal Bates will report out on some of his findings.
Thank you, Dr. Maguire. Thanks, everyone, for having us. We launched our survey several days after Mary Rowlinson and Luther Burbank, which I think was consistent around the same time as Hale and Center as well. So the data is pretty representative of where we were as a district at that phase of remote learning. We had 135 K-5 parents respond. We had 192 overall, and I will speak to the middle school piece in our next meeting. But between 13, per grade level, it averaged about 13 to 33 participants. The participation rate was 29.8%. What we found in terms of the time spent on remote learning, that there's a scale, averaged about two to three hours on work daily. And as you can well imagine, the level of dependence versus independence scales down, kindergarten, kindergarten students needing, you know, a lot more support and hand-holding with parents than the fifth grade students do, where they're mostly independent. From the start of remote learning, we tried to, across the district, communicate with our families about the challenges that we saw in developing this plan, and to communicate that we were open and continue to be open to feedback. And it's really been crucial in helping us evolve with this and be responsive to our community. And at the time of the survey, some of the challenges that were articulated through the data and anecdotally had to do with keeping up with the assignments from the specialists. That continues to be a challenge with the amount of time that students and families are committing to the assignments and the core content classes, and then, you know, trying to keep up with PE challenges and art challenges and music and so forth. I will say, relative to that, both challenge and positive outcome, we're seeing a lot of great feedback from families about, you know, sort of engaging in the creative process that are not necessarily part of our assignments. You know, children and parents cooking together and, you know, working on art pieces and spending time outside and learning about nature. So I do think that there are some benefits in that as well. Another challenge is, that I'm sure you're aware of it as, you know, parents as well, is finding balance between the screen time and the non-screen time activities. And along those lines, balancing the challenges that come with, you know, the number of devices versus the number of children and the bandwidth for families, you know, while you're trying to do your own work remotely as well. With regard to, you know, where we are in terms of the positives that have come out of this, additionally, the data suggests that the overall communication with our families has been strong and well-received. You know, we've seen so many innovative approaches to teaching and learning, and I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our teachers for the investment that they've made in, you know, rethinking so much of how they've approached their jobs. And again, keeping in mind that the surveys at this point were a few weeks ago, we have seen a steady increase in the live interaction with students, consistent with the DESC Phase 3 rollout. And I'm grateful for the, you know, Dr. Maguire and Teaching and Learning and Superintendent Clutchy's support of, you know, those tools and making them available to our teachers to build in more opportunities for some of that live interaction as well.
Thank you, Joel. From there, we'll move on to Mary Rowlinson, and I think we've got both Principal O'Shea and Assistant Principal Blanchard tonight.
Sure, so thank you. I also want to clarify, I asked Scott to come along, because in a few minutes, I'll be sitting virtually in the seats that you're all sitting in. I'm a school committee member for El Gunkwin Regional High School, and I was worried about your schedule, and I have a meeting very soon, so I wanted to make sure Scott was available in case I wasn't. So I just want to clarify why he was here. But so at the time, speaking of El Gunkwin, I kind of modeled our survey on the Northborough Regional one. As a parent, I received one from them, and there were a lot of great questions that I received. At the time we sent it out, I had just met with our school council, and they were ever so grateful about what the teachers were doing, but they said, parents were also very nervous to contact teachers, to say, give some feedback, because they knew how hard teachers weren't working, and they didn't want to upset them, or, you know, kind of throw something into the apple cart here. So we designed the survey to really get feedback, to get some assumptions that we had, and figure out how we could best serve the students and families, and let them give a safe avenue to give feedback. I've never gotten a survey with this many responses in my almost 12 years here. We had 286 responses. We asked for one per child, that way we got feedback for each grade level. A typical survey, I get about 100, 110 back. So 59% of the students were represented in the survey, which was just phenomenal. The more information we have, the better we could, you know, get feedback to the teachers and improve our work. So a couple data points that you guys were just talking about, we have 64% of our students working 90 minutes or more. When you drop that down to 60 minutes or more, it's 85% of our students. So we do recognize we have some students in families that are, you know, struggling to engage in the work or find the time to do the work. And we've been, since that time, we've been working to find ways to help them engage more. 38% of the students, as I said, were spending over 60 minutes, and 14% over two hours a day. So that's a lot of work. Parents were also indicating how much time they're spending essentially supporting their children, and they are spending significantly more. So Scott, do you want to talk about the challenges?
Yeah, so the results based on our survey are, look very similar to the other schools. And the challenges that we discovered for MRE families fell into three main categories: competing demands, motivation, and executive functioning and technology. And in terms of competing demands, we discovered that it was a combination of factors that was playing into it. It might be a family where you have both parents working from home, and there's a lack of devices for the students to access to be able to get their schoolwork done. Or it might be multiple children in the same household, all trying to get their schoolwork So it was a variety of factors, but that was the largest challenge that we saw. Another challenge was the parents motivating our students to, you know, initiate the tasks that were provided, finishing completing the tasks that were provided, and just sort of motivating them through the process of remote learning at home. And the third one was technology, which includes, like I said before, access to devices, but also navigating multiple online platforms for getting the work done. And in response to those things, we've, I think, we'll talk about it later in another slide, but we've taken some steps to make sure that families are supported in those ways, including providing videos that the counselors have put together to give families tips about how to best support their students at home. And we also have a, we've been, our Chromebooks to families and things like that.
We didn't want to end the survey on a sour note, so we asked if there were any benefits to remote learning. And I was wondering if people would find some, but there were quite a few. There were a lot of responses to this question. You know, naturally, they're seeing an increase in independence. Students are learning how to, you know, function on their own, which is a great benefit. Obviously, an increase in technology skills. They're on it more, they're using it more, they're becoming more proficient with it. At that time also, we were just starting the Google Meets, and they found that was one of the best things the parents reported, is anytime they could engage with adults from the school. And then a benefit of remote learning time, many, as Joel was talking about, the cooking and so on, many families are finding, you know, it joyful to be actually with the family and not being hurried. And honestly, I find that having no commute is a positive amongst all the other challenges. The last thing that kind of was a recurring theme is, and we use to help our ongoing learned planning, was they also found online programs, say, as iXL, or something that students could work on independently online, was something they were looking for. The parents enjoy being able to set the, or Lexia Meeting Program, they enjoy setting the students up on it and letting them work and progress for a period of time. So those, that was the overall summary of our surveys.
Thank you, Sean and Scott. So this last slide, what we did was kind of, I can keep in mind that this is just from an elementary perspective, so there certainly will be other key takeaways as we take a look at the middle school level and as well as the high school level, and as well as the different perspectives from families and students. But, you know, one of the major takeaways with this, and this was to some enhanced and specific guidance that even came out of DSE in the last couple of weeks, that focused on two-way connections with students. And we continue to find new ways to find those two-way connections with students. I reported out on that a couple of weeks ago. You know, we've certainly opened up and expanded our Google Meet, our video conferencing, and trying to provide as much support for teachers, and strongly encouraging them to do that, not only between, you know, teacher and student, but between small groups of students with an advisor, with a counselor, those kinds of things, as well as through, say, Google Classroom. And I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about how we've expanded our email capabilities and communication capabilities with even our younger students. So with this kind of feedback, we continue to just kind of grow in a very safe and secure way to make sure that people are informed on how to do it and how to do it safely. The idea of streamlining all of our planning across district, where, you know, it's certainly a regional school, so it's a little bit harder to do across three towns, especially for the video conferencing piece. Early on, we were hearing that some teachers were video conferencing, some were not, and we certainly wanted to make sure that we could provide a platform for all students. You know, our K through 2 students are working on within the Seesaw platform, and then our 3 through 12 students are working within Google Meet and Google Classroom. So that was some of the key takeaways. And as we look towards the summer, as we look towards the fall, that's going to be very, very important as it relates to virtual learning. But some feedback that parents would like to potentially see teaching plans earlier than a Monday morning, maybe coming out on a Sunday or over the weekend, or maybe even on a Friday, so that, you know, people are able to plan for the upcoming week. We heard that loud and clear. We did have some counselors, like Joan did such a great job a couple of weeks ago in showing some of her videos with some of her staff, creating videos to support families for students around executive functioning skills, life skills. We've certainly heard from families who need technology. Hats off to the Technology Department, who've really put together and been there for families who either have an issue with a Chromebook or need a loaner Chromebook, and, you know, really have, and need that technological help. And we continue to work on those requests. It seems to be working very smoothly. And the other thing is that, you know, we hear from parents that, you know, they're teaching, they're teaching for the first time, and they certainly need support. And so as I work with Teaching and Learning, as we look towards the summer and the fall, and, you know, we always offer a summer academy, what kind of supports can we provide for parents as well as teachers as it relates to at-home instruction? So those are our key takeaways. So I thank the principals for coming tonight and reporting out on their data. They're certainly crazy busy, as we all are, so I think we take questions at this point from anyone.
Okay, can we just go back to the committee being on screen so that I can recognize folks and people can unmute? So right now, I'm seeing, all right, questions, Brooke?
Mine's not a question, but I just want to make a quick bold comment. This particular grade grouping, that K-5, was one that was probably presented some of the greatest challenges, I think, to its teachers and administration, because it's not, it's really just not a natural thing, and it's so not how K-5 teachers generally deal with students of that age. And, you know, I know when I went on to each of the staff meetings that I was able to attend, I wanted to be sure to say an extra special thank you, because the skill sets that... Because the skill sets that this particular grade grouping of teachers had to develop overnight was just unbelievable. I mean, we did like crash course uh, sessions to help support people. I mean, we, we had to do a lot to bring everybody along. And I just think that they, the staff, I think, deserve so much credit because so much had to be acquired so quickly in, in an area that just is not, it just doesn't feel normal. Um, I think the other thing too, um, I, I'd want to stress is our thanks to our parents right across the district. Because um, it's hard. And when you're not used to doing this, it's really, really difficult. And I just think that our parents have done such a fabulous job. Um, I know one of the things that I really appreciated when I was looking through the survey results of Florence Sawyer, um, the, the campus there. It was just so wonderful to see the, the notes of appreciation from the Bolton parents to the Bolton teachers. Um, I just thought that was incredibly special. The other thing when you drill down too, that was, was interesting is, is sometimes you'd see almost uh, polar opposite lines of thinking, too much screen time, not enough screen time. And it was just like, it was just polar opposites as, as you were looking at some of the additional comments. So it was, it was just fascinating to, to, um, to take a look through. The other thing I think, um, you know, I, I, I just want to put out there too is I think everybody does their level best. And wherever there have been issues, we've worked very hard as a district to help support them. And the technology is one of those pieces. And I think G and S team have done an amazing job of that. And then we, we want to thank the kids, because this is not easy. And I think again, for this grade grouping particularly difficult. And I think that our students, our youngest, youngest students deserve the world of credit right now. Thank you.
Questions? Steven?
This isn't a question, but first of all, I was very encouraged by hearing that the kids were getting more and more independent and able to deal with the technology, even at that younger age. And I think that bodes well for one of my major concerns. And that is if, when we come back to school in the fall, we still don't know what it's going to look like. And if we still have to, um, it's going to be a very special challenge there. The four, the four, grade fours and fives, who I, I get, like I said, I get encouragement from the idea that they're becoming more independent and more comfortable with the technology that they've probably played around with at home, but have never really um, had to deal with in depth like we're asking them to do now. So that, you know, once again, the, the question that we had in um, citizens comments or the question is what about next year? And obviously we don't have, we don't have any answers for next year. Whether it's going to be the way it is now, whether it's going to be different, whether it's going to be something in between what we have now and what we had before March thirteenth. But I, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting some internal encouragement or I'm feeling a little bit better um, hearing some of these reports. And uh, they're used to um, dealing with um, or they're, they're easier to acclimatize to remote learning. And I'm just, I'm just fantastic. I'm just fantastically impressed with our teachers, particularly the ones who this is totally new to and how they, how well they've adapted to it. And um, I'm just very happy. I would like to make that comment.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions? Elaine, and then Mary.
Um, so it sounds like two-way communication came through um, on all three of the surveys in terms of video conferencing, recorded videos. Um, I guess that's not really two-way. But anyway, um, what have the teachers have to, have had to say about this? Um, and I know you can't demand that they do these types of things, but is there a goal for how much of that interaction should be occurring? Is it like one video conference per day, one video conference per week? Like, are there, are there metrics like that that you're shooting for? Or is it just sort of a general encouragement and everybody does what they can?
I think Ross, you wanted to respond to that?
I'm sorry, who had, oh, I was watching the school committee, not the principals. Um, Joel, you want to say something? And then Ross.
Okay, so um, I, I imagine our responses are probably pretty similar, but the um, uh, teachers have set times. They're also available for interaction that, that might come outside of those times. Where we've seen the live conferencing be a, a huge uh, boost for students is in the social emotional capacity and just being able to connect. And while it's important to connect with their, their teachers, they love connecting with each other as well. And um, it, you know, it, I think the ramp up to it is a combination of, of, you know, making sure that we had the right technology and that it would work okay and that we were providing our families with a tool that we would able to, be able to onboard them quickly so that there wouldn't be barriers to be, being able to have it work successfully. But what we're seeing now, um, it, um, Seesaw tends to be more pushing the lessons out. But, but our, some of our K to two teachers are using the Google Meet as well for meetups. And, and that's, you know, that's, it's been a really positive um, a, aspect, evolution piece of, of the remote learning.
Thank you. Ross, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I can add what, sort of what messaging we've done at, at center, um, you know, to Elaine's question about, you know, you know, handling, you know, aspects of, is there a quantity, is there a goal, things like that? So I would say that the way that we've approached it, you know, with Ms. Neill and I is that we're learning with them as we go. And hearing that, you, you know, just reinforcing that kids are getting a lot from these, these lessons that are taught by their teacher, uh, whether they're live or pre-recorded. And then, uh, you know, hearing from them, okay, you know, what's, what are some of the problem solving things that we're coming up with? So one teacher was trying to do something with her entire class and it took forty-five minutes. And we're understanding that, you know, from working with, you know, Christie and I reached out to Tammy Mulligan, who we've done a lot of our literacy professional development with over the last several years and talking with her about what are some solutions for remote learning. And one of her suggestions was, you know, record the mini lesson, record the content real quick, push that out and then try to do follow-up small groups. I, I say that as an ideal, and again, I'll go back to my comment that I made when I was reporting out survey data is that, you know, we're all in the same storm, but in different boats. So to put sort of like an expectation on a quantity for a teacher is one thing, but one teacher may be sort of by themselves and have a, a lot of time to do that. Where another one maybe also, you know, they're working from home, but they have kids who are in school at multiple grade levels, you know, with limited technology or limited bandwidth, you know, for their, their internet. So I think we're trying to sort of tease that out and work. And I think when we problem solve, trying to problem solve with a message of like, how can we put this into small groups? How can we put this, you know, into quote unquote, like that synchronous, that live learning? Um, but that's what we're encouraging at this point.
Thank you. Sean, did you want to say, add to any of that?
Sure.
You don't have to.
No, um, you, you know, it, it, one thing that guided us in the, in the um, survey was that uh, parents like the video, parent, teacher videos where they just straight on, you know, give a focus lesson like Ross was, because they can play that at any time. And then um, you know, the Google meets were more for the social component or for support. So that, that's how, you know, the, the surveys guided us in terms of that. But um, you know, this is just, it is remarkable. I, I, as somebody had said earlier, I think, uh, Joel, the teachers are to be wholly commended in what they've done, because they've spent years perfecting to be excellent teachers in front of students, not in front of a computer. And they did that, and they're still learning that, but um, and they're adapting and they're reflective. That's part of the Nishoba culture is to, you know, reflect and think and change and not be, you know, one size fits all. So um, just what the teachers have done has been remarkable and it continues to evolve. Um, so as to that question about the fall, they're, they're continuing to evolve and, and uh, continuing to look for opportunities to learn and um, and adapt their learning to make it the best it can be.
Thank you. Mary, you had a question before? Unmute, Mary. Can't hear you. Unmute now?
Mike has a question too, that maybe we can take while Mary's.
Let me see. Can you unmute, Mary? Okay, we're gonna go to Mike and then come back to you. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have a question. I just want to preface the question by first acknowledging, um, as I, as a bunch of people have already said, the efforts, um, both from the perspective of a teacher and the perspective of parents of kids in the district. There has been, uh, I think from my lens, a level of consistency, uh, particularly as we really got traction. Every week we are sort of um, seeing the same level of expectation. Teachers have been really receptive to adapting to feedback. Um, there was one uh, week in particular where I reached out to a friend who had some comments and they must have um, reached out to the teacher. And right away there were changes and adaptations. And um, it's fantastic feeling like uh, parents can reach out to teachers and um, the teachers respond because um, you know, it is all new. I would, I would say that the lessons are also very well calibrated. Um, and really I'm saying this because I just feel like it deserves attention. And to parents that are, experience any level of frustration, just realize that everything is evolving in real time. This is not something that um, we have at all prepared for. And so we have to expect a level of um, I, I don't know, I guess a, a, some sort of level of discontinuity, but, but it really, truly, the teachers have done tremendous, uh, tremendous job minimizing that. So anyways, my question um, goes back to the survey. And the survey was a really nice check-in, particularly at sort of the, maybe the midway point to see how things were going. I wonder if there are plans to have an end of the year survey so that um, the district can um, move forward with some of the takeaways from the previous year. So that in the event that we do have um, a, a, either delayed start or we have some sort of um, resurgence that we're able to do this in, in even better and more consistent, more fluid way.
I'll start with that and then I'll turn it over to Todd and Sean. I think that we are looking ahead with that as being a real possibility. And so I think that um, we would, we would want to do a quick check-in at the year's end as well so that we are well-prepared. And, and I think you hit it right on the head when you, because what you, the example that you gave, we're seeing that right across the district. We are consistently, and it goes exactly to what Sean had said about the culture, we are consistently trying to improve our practices. And um, and I appreciate your comment too about this all being in real time, because you're absolutely right. But in real time, we're also able to make changes or tweaks to what we're doing and that kind of thing. So I think it would, I think it would be a lost opportunity if we did not do something at year end. Todd, Sean?
And Todd or principals, you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I think too, um, you know, we've, particularly in teaching and learning, we're discussing uh, how a year-end survey will certainly help us as we make plans for the summer as well. And probably surveying teachers as well will be crucial to providing them what they need over the summer, as well as at this, even at the start of the school year, because we certainly will continue with our professional development. That may be in virtual mode, but we certainly want to support them um, as best we can. And so I appreciate the question as well as the feedback. Uh, I, I just wanted to make one more um, point that, you know, at some of these things, Mike, you mentioned about getting traction and all that. With everything that we, we do, we want to make sure that, you know, we can't ask somebody to do anything without teaching them how to do it. And so sometimes these things take a little bit of time. And certainly I, I'm a parent of two adolescents, so I sense sometimes the frustration like, why isn't this coming out sooner? But as an example, um, we're going to push out the, the opening of uh, email for our three to five students, because it's another way they can communicate with their um, with their teachers, as well as with their parents' help. But we know they don't know how to do that. So just as an example, I would just want to, I'll, I'll share this screen. But you know, we, we, can you all see that?
Yes.
So what we did in teaching and learning and with some help, we created, you know, we're going to push this out to families and kids and teachers so that we've created a variety of introductory videos for students on how to log on to their email and what that looks like. Um, a variety of videos. It's kind of a how-to for kids, a kind of how-to for teachers and a how-to for parents. So we can't just open up the email and say, go ahead and use it. And we certainly can't bring students in and, and, and train them on their devices. But what we can do is provide these types of documents and send them out ahead of time um, from our principals and teaching and learning to families so that they've got some sort of a guide. So this is something that we'll send out to them. And then we'll put it on our remote learning site. But I just wanted to point out that we've been doing that with everything, even if it's video conferencing. We'll send out a how-to. Um, we offer professional development for teachers on the video conferencing. And you know, anything that they're asking for, we're trying to provide these kinds of supports, even though we can't come directly help them one-on-one, person to person. These are the types of things that we are putting out there so that at least they've got some guidance on how to use it.
And I think the other thing I would say too is, we continue, when we talk about the culture within, we continue to be very thoughtful as we are rolling things out. This is a perfect example. I mean, this, this conversation about Gmail for praise three to five has been in, in, in the pipeline for a couple of weeks now, you know? But we feel really good. We feel that we're ready to do this. I'm very comfortable with moving it forward.
Thank you. Um, okay, there we go. Um, Ross, Sean or Joel, did you want to add anything?
Just that we're really appreciative of, you know, the, the, this ongoing partnership that we have with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the Department of Teaching and Learning. I, I think you know that we, we meet pretty often as teams under remote learning. To Sean's point, you know, not having the commute, not having to leave the day-to-day responsibilities. We meet all the time, um, several times a week, e- either with the principals or with the superintendent or with all of the directors. And I think it's served us really, really well in being able to be responsive to this feedback that we're seeking and getting and to be able to help us evolve, to, to serve our communities to the best of our ability.
Thank you. Um, Sean?
Uh, I was going to say this before and then Brooke and Todd spoke, so I'll, I'll kind of go out on a limb. Of course, I will do whatever the district, uh, we all decide together. But in terms of the end of the year surveys, um, I had been wrestling with that and thinking about it. But um, and then I, I, in my mind this week, I was thinking I probably wouldn't do that um, for a couple of reasons. Um, and I'll just throw it out there for, for thought and it can be decided later, obviously. The, um, one of the things that came through in the survey was two-way communication and also a lot of communication. The parents are feeling like they're getting a lot. And so I, I was worried about overburdening parents with another survey and another digital aspect of, of that. The other thought is, um, I think there's a lot we can reflect on based on those surveys and then what we've done to enhance anything going forward. You know, we um, not using a lot of different online tools, streamlining it, making sure passwords are streamlined, uh, really tightening up the curriculum, a lot of things we spoke to. So I think, I think taking all of this in collectively as a teaching and learning or administrative team and, and talking to some teachers, I, 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 I was thinking we could really make a good plan going forward about how, how do we do and what do we need to do next? But um, but of course, if we, uh, if, if we come up with a survey, um, it would be, you know, great to get that feedback. But I, I just hesitate about overwhelming people at this time of year um, with, with more.
Thank you. Ross?
Similar to what, you know, Sean said, the, the concern about overwhelming and, and maybe not getting as much feedback as we'd want as parents finish up a school year and look to summer. I think if we looked at a, a survey at the end of the year, I know that I would be, you know, curious about how that would inform, you know, what our, what our possible situations are, you know, that, that have been brought up. And I think the citizens comments addressed it, you know, we could be either open in this, in a hybrid situation or we could be under a closure again. And sort of what do we need out of the survey to address, you know, either the hybrid or a, a full closure again? And getting some just reflective feedback from families would be, would be really important. And, and, and my final comment would just be, again, I go back to that evolution of partnerships for families and, and teachers too. I've been just so amazing in their, their learning curve. And I think moving some of the, the communication to students through, through Gmail will be uh, will be important for, for some of that overwhelm that I think some families are having. Um, and, and looking specifically at, at that, I think maybe I'd like to hear some specifics from just K to two families about that, what, what that would. about that, what, what that would look like for them because I think they have a unique perspective and a unique situation that they're in with their students at home.
Thank you. Mary, are you ready? Oh my goodness. Mary, can you unmute? Are you muted? No? Alita, is there any way to troubleshoot for Mary? You're muted too.
I know, I was. She's not muted. It's something with her computer.
Oh, okay. Mary, you, if, I'm gonna call on Leah, but where'd you go? Mary? Leah, we'll go to you and then when Mary pops back in, we will.
I was actually gonna tell Mary to jump out and jump back in, so maybe that will help.
What advice?
I have a couple of things really quick. So I would say that to echo everybody, what everybody's saying, um, the teachers are amazing. Their collaboration is at an all-time high. I can't even believe some of the things that they're doing. Just really cool. Um, I think that the synchronized learning, whatever the DESC wants us to do, right? Like that face-to-face or teacher-led videos, that's happening a lot at the elementary level and it's really not happening at the secondary, at the middle and secondary level. So I guess I can speak to that next time when we talk about secondary. I would say that Google Classroom is being underutilized and that's true in my school too, where we just need more consistency and teachers need more training on how to use and maximize that tool. Because the way that kids, we're having to print a lot and we're having to do like a lot of printing and negotiating with devices and much of what they are doing can be held inside classroom. I would say survey as much as you can. This is just one parent talking, but survey as much as you can. Um, I would also say that the, the high school surveys went out to parents, but they didn't go out to kids. And I would really like to hear, um, what the students think about remote learning. And I would even say that the middle school kids might have some insight as well. The last thing that I will say, and this is perhaps, um, just needs to wait until Joan presents, is I'm wondering about not just sped timelines and, and like meetings and doing all those reevals, but sped services and how those are being equitably distributed in these really, really difficult times. It's probably the hardest part of our job right now. So I don't know if that's a question for the principals, if there's some sort of-
Notice that's on the list of questions for Joan, so I would defer to her. Okay. Mary?
Can you hear me?
Yay, yes.
Frustrating thing not to be able to, uh, to talk on this and I'm sorry for delaying.
That's okay.
I had, it was, took three times. So, um, with, in regard to the surveys, with thanks to the principals and to Todd and to teaching and learning and to all the parents who responded, there's, there's a wealth of, of information and it's really important and very, very helpful. And initially I wished that everyone used the same survey because I thought that the results would, would, you know, be able to be more across the district, but I'm, I'm not so, uh, I'm, I'm happy now that everyone didn't use the same survey. A lot of similar results, but I have to say that Mary Rollinson having a 59% response rate is something that, um, I know the other principals will look at that survey and try to figure out. I mean, there is an art to surveys and if you get that much of a response rate, something was, was right on that. And it brings me to one of the points that, that parents have made is that, you know, that, that survey, Mary Rollinson's, came from, a lot of it from Northborough. And the more, uh, sharing that we can do with all of our other district connections, which from, from Brooke to, um, people on school committee in other districts who are our principals, the more we can bring in, and this has been a parent concern too, that it seems as though maybe some other districts have some ideas that, that we could incorporate. And so going forward, this isn't really, um, you know, a, a question. It's, it's more a comment and as well as, as thanks for all that has been done. And I think, although I understand what Mike was talking about, about having another survey, the more I'm thinking about it, I think it would be too much right now for, for parents as they're trying to, you know, it, bring everything together and finish out the year. But certainly, surveys and to get, I know that we will be getting back to parents so they hear about this, not just from what we're doing now. So the parents know that all the responses they, they got and, um, we'll, we'll go back out to them. So I think that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. I had a, a comment, I think something that came through and I don't know how we address it for the rest of the year, but also if we find ourselves in a similar situation in the new school year, is the issue, um, in households where there's limited bandwidth and not just students, um, using it, but parents having to use it for their, um, their, their own work. Um, my son works for Verizon and he was telling me about just the incredible increase in Verizon's business around people upgrading what they have, their FiOS, their bandwidth because, because of meetings, but because of all the kids learning from home. So I don't even know how we tackle that. And then I was thinking about the, uh, uh, again, a self-reference to my daughter and her family. The, her son, um, had a Chromebook and that helped him. And they ended up getting a Chromebook for their, their daughter who's in second grade so that they wouldn't have to, to, to share and do that. So I don't know how we address that or if there's, what discussions have been around dealing with this issue that has come up as one of the themes in the, the elementary, um, surveys. So I don't know, um, who would be the best person? Todd? What, has it come up and what, I don't know what we can do, if there's anything we can do.
You, as it relates to the bandwidth piece, you mean?
Well, just that, that you've got, maybe there are two parents working from home. They each have a computer. And then, um, they have three kids, maybe two have school-issued Chromebooks and the other one is just, I don't know, freewheeling it. I don't know. But I'm sure that, again, to Mary's point, I think if there's a way and, and probably through the superintendent's organization or, or, you know, whatever groups there are, to see what's going on in other districts and how they're problem-solving around this. So I don't know, Todd, if you could just speak to that, any conversations or thoughts?
Yeah. So prior to, uh, when we first went out, you know, Comcast and a lot of people had reached out because Comcast was, and other, other places were, were offering free services for those who did not have it. So that was, that was for those who either did not have it or couldn't afford it, et cetera. And they were out there. And that was more of a municipal piece, not necessarily tied to the school. So as it relates to your question about, you know, increasing that capacity and what they can do, we can certainly reach out. There were a number of people who reached out in some contacts that I do have that I can reach back to, um, as well as bring it to my, my assistant super's group as a, as a question. We meet once a week, so I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, excuse me. Sean, where are you? Do you, are you leaving now?
He's got another meeting, yeah.
Did you have another comment you wanted to make?
I just, I just, if okay, Scott can speak to MRE if you don't mind.
No, that's fine. And thank you so much for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Um, all right. I'm sorry. Todd, did you have anything else?
Nope. So I, I can certainly investigate that and reach back and, and, you know, come back with, um, anything I, I come up with and find.
But in terms of, you know, talking about surveys, I think if we identify areas that we might, maybe not a, like 20 questions, if there were five questions district-wide about problem-solving or needs or something like that, but we don't, you know, have to go into it now. Brooke, did you want to add something to?
A couple of quick things. I think, you know, we said right at the beginning, and I just want to emphasize this too, that we're not one-to-one at that K to five. And we knew that right at the beginning and we knew that that, we were a little concerned, uh, about the very thing that you're talking about. But all in all, I, I think it worked out really, really well. And we did hear from those parents who were in really bad space that we were able to help and get whatever it was that they needed. The other thing I would say, so that's kind of at the local level, I would also let you know that, um, the commissioner has reached out to the key, telecommunications folks. And so I think that they're looking at something at, at the state level as well as, at, at our local level. Now, not, not that anything has come through to us on this, but we know that they are having regular communication.
Okay. No, just that that seemed to be a theme among the schools. So, okay. Anything else on this topic? Leah?
I just want to say one thing that, uh, just jumped into my mind and that is if we're gonna go further down the road with remote learning, I think parents are gonna become more and more concerned about learning and feedback. And, um, so as a teacher, I'm able to give my kids feedback. I teach reading and writing, so I'm, I'm helping my kid, you know, so, but there are a lot of parents out there who aren't teach literacy teachers or coaches or even math teachers. So I think feedback is a really important avenue that none of the surveys touched upon because nobody's in that headspace yet. So that's why I say regular surveys, because new things are gonna dawn on us. And again, I'll circle back and say, classroom is a really easy way to give very quick and global feedback to lots of kids at once. And so maximizing those tools so that teachers don't totally burn out throughout this.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the principals? Okay, seeing nothing. I want to thank Ross and Scott and Sean and Joel for being here tonight, for your time, for your dedication. And I know that, um, you know, the teachers, I, I just echo what everyone said about the work that is going on with the teachers, but I also have to, uh, give parents just, I, I don't think, you know, you see, you go through like you have your kids, so you imagine a lot of things, but you don't imagine having to be quarantined with them and help them with their schooling. So just kudos to, to the parents. And I know many of us sitting around this table, not me, but are dealing with the work and with teaching, uh, other people's kids and your own kids. So it's just, it's, it's wonderful for the, the work you do. But the leadership of the principals and the administrative team, uh, cannot be understated. And thank you so much. Because I know that you guys make your teachers feel, um, supported and, um, the, the outreach for them in addition to the parents that you provide is exceptional. So thank you very much. So, um,
Thank you.
If there are no objections, you are free.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks. Okay, Brooke, I think you are going to, uh, talk about global travel.
I'm gonna start it off and then I'm gonna turn it over to Todd right away. One of the concerns that we have, and we, we would just like to have some discussion on that tonight, is we have, I believe, two trips right now, Todd, that are planned for next year. That, uh, people are starting to pay, parents are paying monthly on and we're concerned right now. We're concerned about next year. We're concerned about whether parents even still really want to be doing this. Uh, you know, I don't even know if they'll be able to send their kids overseas next year like they're planning on it. And with our, the experience that we've had, not just within Neshoba, but across the state and across the country with these travel agencies, it, it concerns me that our parents are continuing to pay into this. And I don't know that we have anything standardized yet in terms of what's coming back when these trips are delayed or whatnot. And so, I mean, that still continues to be a bit of a work in progress. But we're just looking ahead saying, maybe we should be shutting that down right now until we have a green light from the governor or, um, whoever, you know, I, I, even right now, for example, planning even localized things, um, e- even as we're pushing out to July, August, September, our DPH is giving pushback and saying, we don't want you doing this. So the notion of planning now for global travel at the next school year, we're just feeling uncomfortable. And so we just are bringing it forward to you tonight.
So I guess the comment I have is that the school committee has to approve it. So I'm wondering how they're going ahead with planning, assuming that we will approve it. We don't have the information in order to do that. And then I don't know why they would be paying. I mean, I, I know they're probably expensive and you pay a little bit as you go. However, given everything, I mean, are they being told that they need to do this or they might lose out? Or are they, are they feeling like, well, we have travel insurance, so let us pay, get a little headache again just in case. And then if it goes, you know, sideways, we get our money back. So what, what's going on? But we have to approve it. And if people have been paying in and we haven't approved it.
So I think what, what we're looking for tonight is to get a flavor of what our school committee feels about travel next year, period. I think that that's really what we're looking for. Todd, would, would you say that's really the goal tonight?
Yeah. And, um, you know, I believe there's, there's just the, the one trip in February that maybe students have started paying for, cause keeping in mind that I mean, I think our policy is 90 days before a trip goes out. But places like EF, et cetera, set up payment plans well over a year so that people can be paying into those plans with the, you know, with the advice to purchase the insurance. So I think that's the one, the one, uh, crossover in terms of identifying when we're gonna have a trip, if it's gonna go and bringing it to you folks. But I know that those companies start, you know, parents out and students out with interest on those payment plans. And that's almost, you know, because the families deal with companies like that individually, not through us in terms of their payment.
Right. But are those companies paying attention to the news, let's say? You know, but anyway.
They are now.
Let me, let me open it up. Other comments, thoughts? Uh, Leah?
Have we an update on how we fared getting money back for the trips that have come to not pass?
So the, the latest was they had done a lot better. Not 100%. That, that aim to get 100% back to all families, um, is still in the Attorney General's office. I did sit on a meeting a couple of weeks ago with, um, with that group. And, you know, we have fared pretty well in terms of that because they then came back and offered a voucher, a future voucher for the full value of the trip. Uh, or reimbursement minus the deposit, I think was the one thing they were gonna hold on to. And we were still pushing to get that full reimbursement. That is in the Attorney's General's office right now and people are, are, are vigorously dealing with that because there are, you know, after sitting on that call, I saw the multiple organizations that obviously were doing the same thing. Same thing with our, you know, our younger kids go to nature's classroom. You know, that's another one that, you, you know, they, they live by the, um, the money that comes in. So giving that, you know, they were struggling giving anything back to families. So that was the latest update. Um, and I, and I know that our, our families were, were happy that we were on it and they, we had done far better, but that trying to get 100% back is still in the Attorney General's office, but we still are fighting it.
Okay. Other, uh, thoughts about global travel for the upcoming year? Oh, Stephen?
Yes, it, I mean, from what I'm, from what I'm reading in the, in the press, the airlines are not even talking about international air travel. The borders, even between the United States and Canada, are still closed. The areas that we're looking to go to, probably Italy is one of them. One of the trips, uh, I think, uh, that we should make, uh, make it, uh, clear now that for the next school year, there are not gonna be any international trips and we're not gonna approve them. And people get, try to get their money back, especially since these companies are being so reluctant to give any money back. I can understand it from their point of view, but then again, it's not right. So unfortunately, I think we really have to bite the bullet here and, um, say, no, there's not gonna be any international travel from Neshoba during the 2020, 2021 school year. And, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. If, if parents want to sign up with outside, uh, organizations that, that may schedule trips, that's their prerogative. But as far as school-sponsored trips, I would say right now with what we know, and once again, we don't know what we don't know, but with what we do know, there's not gonna be a whole lot of international travel during the next school year. And I think we should let parents know that we feel this way now.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Um, Elaine?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I mean, my families or my philosophy right now for personal travel is I'm not booking anything that isn't 100% refundable. So I, it would be disingenuous to say that other families, that I would be fine with other families doing that. If, I don't see a change coming for global travel in the next school year either, like Steve said. But if, if for some reason things did open up and it was okay, then I would be much more comfortable sort of scrambling. If for some reason things did open up and it was okay, then I would be much more comfortable sort of scrambling and trying to help. People put something together, once we know it's safe, than say, planning and assuming it's going to be safe. And then having to either cancel and deal with people not getting their money back. Or, you know, breaking these, the people's hearts over something that they planned for and thought was gonna happen.
Yeah, and and I wonder about these companies holding this out or making this available at this point in time. Um, and maybe um, uh Todd, if you could speak with whomever the the faculty. Members who is coordinating this, um and get us some information about. Why that it's it's proceeding, reminding them that the school committee has to approve it. And and that it's that people are, it's unless people have travel insurance, it's. And if if the school committee doesn't approve it, is that a reason to get your money back? So maybe we, if you could, yeah, go ahead.
So I, so I've reached out to EF like with this process a number of times, it kind of, they kind of elevated up to to me from the high school, you know, and I certainly. Reached out and expressed my concerns, and then, you know, it's certainly in a, in a superintendent's group with all of us who've signed petitions and this and that, and so. With this particular trip, that's already, you know, kind of, kind of off the ground, you know, I brought this up to, you know, Brooke about a month ago, and Steve just say, you know what? I don't wanna be in the same position we were in with the Italy trip this year, so I would rather get out ahead of this. So, I mean, and I'm happy to call EF and say, look, based on what we know, can we put a, like, I'd like to at least put a freeze on something. At some point, so so at least our families aren't paying into something that they potentially aren't gonna get back.
That's right, I mean, and.
So.
I I just, I I it's sort of mind-boggling to me that after we went through last year, that this would even be.
I agree.
A thing that 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 people would do, and when did it start? If it started in March, I'm like, like. In, I don't know, I'm I'm with Elaine, you know, we're not traveling anywhere till there's a vaccine, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and I mean, ultimately, that's why I brought it up, like, I mean, I brought it to my group, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and they kind of laughed at me, like, oh my god, we haven't even. Thought about that, and I said, well, we don't wanna be in the same position we were, again, where, you know, where families have paid thirty-five hundred dollars. To go to Italy, like, right now, it's at the infancy of the payment, so I'd rather get ahead of it.
Bud, yeah, but I think it's important that um, the the um, and I don't know, let me just go through. The group, if everybody could unmute, let me just do a check-in. Leah, where do you stand? Do we pull the plug or?
Yeah, I think that um, especially in February being winter, I don't imagine um, anything's gonna be going well in February, so. I'm with, I think Steve uh said it very articulately, that international travel trips for next year are perhaps off.
Thank you, Brett? Brett, can you hear me? Joseph?
Uh, if you're seeking, uh, you know, a consensus on this.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm gonna go to Joseph, we'll get back, Joseph.
Yeah, ma- maybe, maybe Brett could use.
He's got some computer things, alright, he's gonna go back in, alright, Joseph.
Uh, if you're looking for consensus on that, I I would agree that it would probably be prudent at this point to. Um, put a moratorium on at least international travel, but as far as what the district does, and this is just. One opinion of one member, uh I would encourage the superintendent um. To. Make her own, make her own decision in regards to, you know, what we do as far as uh travel is concerned and. Not look to the governor, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable with the decisions being made at a local level as far as at a state level, so. Um, whatever you decide, Madam Superintendent, I will support you a hundred percent, and that's all I have to say on that.
Yeah, but in terms of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Brooke.
I'll I'll speak once, once you're all done.
So, Joseph, this is the 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 field trips that the school committee has to approve, overnight field trips, and I think if. They leave the state even for the day, do we have to approve that or just, yeah, but but yeah, I would agree that just as so we. She was sort of went rogue and and uh stopped school before it was official from the state, I I trust that. Her to make that decision.
No, I I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, but I applaud the superintendents.
Yes, me too, going rogue for me is sort of like a compliment.
No, I I couldn't support the superintendent more in that, I I'd like to say, I would ask the superintendent. You know, search her own heart as far as, as opposed to looking at what, you know, Governor Baker might be doing, so I I would say just, whatever you think is in the best interest, I'll support that.
Okay, thanks, Brett? Can you talk to us now? I think, are you having technical difficulties, it sounds like?
Can you hear now?
It's very slow. Alright, let's see, how you doing?
Still nothing from me?
That's a little bit, yeah, that's a little bit better.
Brett, wait, maybe what you might wanna consider doing is writing something in the chat.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Let us read it, see if that, if that helps, that's a way to communicate with us.
Okay, um, Mary?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I I I'm not in favor of international travel at all for next year, um, this is something that the school committee approves. And um, and you know, it might even be that a national, you know, uh within the United States. Might not. But might not be possible, so I agree with what Steve was saying, and, yeah.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
The uh, the the idea of giving. Giving vouchers if trips are, this is what the airlines have been trying to do, and they're getting killed for trying to do that rather than refunding. And so even even if vouchers are are offered, okay, so a kid. A kid in the senior high school gets a trip to to Italy, it's canceled, he gets a voucher to do it next year, well, next year, who knows where he is? And what his schedule is gonna be like.
True.
So, once again, this is, this is just uh, from my, from my point of view, this, the voucher rather than the refund is a big scam.
Hi Brett, okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker, okay? Alright. Okay, so you just to hold on travel, okay, stay tuned, if if we'll call, I I can keep you on speaker, is that okay? Alright, good. Alright, so Mike? Do you remember what the question was?
Uh, I think so, I I actually don't know, um. I don't know that, I I don't know that it matters whether we put a moratorium on or not, because it is decided at the school committee level, or it's going to be appropriate or not.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, on the one hand, I feel like it might be a little bit too early to make these sweeping decisions, but on the other hand. If we keep writing on the wall, it won't get approved, I think the only reason we would wanna put a moratorium on it is to protect. The financial interests of the parents and the kids.
Yeah, okay, so Todd, I think, I I think we've heard from everybody. Um, so even though we have not taken a formal vote, I think you can get a sense of where we're coming from, if you'd like to share that. With the advisor, um, and it does concern me that in light of events. That this move forward with, and people are giving money, but that's. Whatever, so.
Is this just for um international, is this, are we speaking just international, or are we speaking domestic travel as well?
I think we have to make a decision, I I and I don't know, I I I think right now, it's, I I think it's. It's it's ill-advised to put money toward something that may not happen. If there's no assurance that you'll get it back.
Yeah, I mean, there are no, none of those trips are in motion, but we do look at nature's classroom for our young kids in the fall.
Yes.
They've all, we've all done the outreach already, that they, we can easily move those to the spring, no problem, so. You know, all of those are not in motion, but when we look at our DC trips, we look at our nature's classroom, we look at, you know, interna- anything international, we just. You know, I certainly wanna be ahead of it.
Okay, but I think you've got a sense of where we're coming from.
Yep.
And uh perhaps, Brooke, you can talk to the principals.
Yeah, a- and I think just to wrap up exactly what Joe was saying, you know, I I guess when whenever I look at our district, I look at. I look at as if, what would I want for my own children, and right now, I would not want my own children traveling. I I don't even want my own children traveling right now, and and he's like thirty-four years old, and I don't want him to do any traveling. So, I'm very, very uncomfortable with the notion of sending any of our children. Um, out globally next year, I I I just, in my heart, I don't support it, and I tend to agree, I I think, Mikey, you said it nicely. Like, we we wanna protect our our parents' money too, who are.
That's right.
Into this right now, so let's, and especially having had the experience that we're, we're just going through right now with EF, and it's not just EF, it's. It's all of them, they're all doing the same thing, so I'm not blaming it's on EF at all, all the travel organizations are doing that, so. If we know it's kind of like once burned, twice shy, okay, well, we've just been burned, so, you know, moving forward, that's why we're coming to you now, saying, this is what our thinking is. Okay? Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Alright, so we're moving right along to our sped follow-up, um, I'd like to welcome Joan and thank her for joining us again. Um, we had a number of questions um after, at the, after the last meeting. Relative to sped, and I was able to put um your questions, um in addition to some. Questions we receive from parents together, and I give them to Joan, there was a lot of um similarities in the questions, so Joan, I'm just gonna. Uh turn it over to you, and then um, um, at the end of Joan's presentation, we can ask um our own questions.
Okay, so I guess we'll just go through the questions, is that okay, one by one? Would it be best just to go through?
I think so, so that we can see, and then if folks have other, it's as we move through.
Alright.
Alright.
So, one of the questions is, although it's invariably a work in progress, um. Could you speak to any plans tentative or otherwise regarding extended school year and what is being considered for implementation? So, um, this is a great question, because the district a- actually starts planning ESY in December. Um, you know, we're very committed to a quality program in our summer um for extended school year. Um, and so Steve and I start that process in December, so at this point, Desi has told us. E- even as late as um this past Friday, to plan for in-person and remote. So, um, that was a little bit encouraging, and I think that's because EEC and some of the summer camps, they're considering, can they open them? And do some soft openings with some procedures in place, so hearing that, um, I have. Uh created a plan for us to do some social distancing, so while ESY is typically all in Lancaster. What I've done is, I've split up ESY in all three of the towns in the seven schools, so that we can have small groups of kids. In individual buildings with staff members and respect social distancing, so there's a comprehensive plan that we have put together. To put um our students back actually in the classrooms, they would be in predominantly, most of them will be in the classrooms they're in during the school year. Which is in all three towns, so they'll go back to a familiar place instead of all coming to Lancaster. Um, if we're able to do face-to-face um instructions, so. All of the staff have been, all the teachers are hired, all the related service providers are hired, all the paraprofessionals are hired, or. And obviously, it's if we're doing it in person, um, we need those staff members, so I feel like staffing is up and ready to go. Um, buildings are ready, I've already talked to Rob about the cleaning of each of the areas, so before we open ESY, he already knows what locations. Where students are going and where the cleaning will happen. Um, you know, the one glitch, you know, is always around busing and what will busing look like. So I've spent a lot of time thinking about that as well, um, and I know, uh, we've sent out our ESY letters. To all of our program parents, we did that a few weeks ago, um, we've heard back from everybody. Uh, we sent out our uh learning lab letters um last week. Um, and those letters are coming in for participation, we look for who's coming so we can plan appropriate schedules. And the related services um letters will be going out this week, so there's really a comprehensive plan. Um, if we have a problem with busing, I think that's something we're gonna have to really think about thoughtfully, because we typically use our. Um, uh, Asbit Valley vans, so. I would love to bring the students back, I think that our program kids um wanna come back and be with us and have some consistency in scheduling. So I was thinking, um, if we have a busing problem, would parents be interested in driving their child to ESY? And could we reimburse them mileage for doing that, would that be a plan B? So I'm always thinking. Plan A, Plan B, Plan C through the process, um. You know, if we end up going to remote um learning, obviously, we probably aren't gonna need the same amount of staff, so there are some. Contingency clauses in terms of the hires for the summer, um, but we've been talking about how can we bring. Um, remote learning for those students in the summer lives, so we're thinking about doing themes for students, and actually. So, we usually do a health and wellness um, a unit, so just for, I just wanna use that as an example, so how can we roll out? Health and wellness remotely, so we're thinking about maybe doing some yoga, some mindfulness, and having people, usually they're coming in. But maybe they'll do it with us um, online and live with our students, with a diff, you know, group of students, can we buy materials? So that we can make a, um, do some meal planning, and then actually make a recipe together, so we're gonna try to do themes throughout the week. That are very connected and thoughtful to engage the kids in remote learning, if we have to go that route. So, um, we're, we're thinking about putting, if we go to remote, kind of a ESY support bag together. And we will be driving to homes and dropping those bags off, so that they have the materials to actually participate in the activities, so. Um, we've had really thoughtful planning around this, um, and we're feeling very ready to go either way, whether it's in-person or remote. I have another uh meeting with Desi on Friday, they've been meeting with us weekly at eleven. Um, ESY keeps coming up, and we don't have any answers, so I feel very committed to having the program run, it's very important for our students. So I just keep planning and going forward. Um, there was a question about out-of-district um schools, um, and. Um. Schools that are providing education enrichment, um, and is that on Neshoba to do, and how does that work? Um, so our out-of-des- our students that are out-of-district, all the tuitions that we pay, it is expected. That the out-of-district school provide a remote learning plan, both to the families and to the districts. But we are monitoring those things, obviously, we're paying for tuition, so we wanna know the services that are being delivered. And how they're being delivered to students, so that's something that we are consistently putting um ongoing monitoring on. We do have some students that um, were in residential placements that are now home, so that, you know, you know. Lends to another perplexing situation of how are we checking on on those students, and how are they doing, and how programs are supporting families. So we've done a lot of outreach with our families for students that are out-of-district. Um, there's a question about addressing the inevitable backlog of evaluations on, once we get back to normal, so. I've had three plans, one started on May fourth, when I thought we were gonna go back and do kind of a testing by storm. And all support each other, and then when school was play, closed for the year. Um, what I did uh was, I gathered all the information of kind of what evaluations are in process that have been started. What has not been started by service providers, so speech, OT, PT, academics, and our um. Our uh school psychologists that do the um. Um, the IQ testing, I went through and went through an entire backlog of what we have to do. So, if we have soft opening, we have some staff that are working in the summer. I would like to contract out and get some of that testing done, cause I would like to be ahead of the curve before we go back to school. So, um, I'm hoping that with some of the funding that's going to come through um from the government, that we can use some of that funding to. Um, pay our related service providers, school psychologists, and special ed teachers to come and deal with the backlog of special ed. Testing, if we aren't able to do that, I have Plan C, which is, when we come back in September, that's probably the lowest. Amount of time that we um. That we um start testing, that's, you know, we don't have a lot of testing. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to deploy all of our related service providers as a group to each town. So for example, we have about twelve evaluations that need to be done in Bolton for a speech and language eval. I'm going to take all our speech and language pathologists and say to them, in this week, you will do these two kids. And you will test them and write the report so that we're all helping each other. And then, you know, the school psychologist will be in Stowe, the occupational therapist will be in Lancaster. And then I will move them week to, you know, in a three-week round, so we can get all the testing and backlog done. And then we can have those meetings, so I've spent a lot of time thinking about that, we've got to really get ahead of the curve in September. Because, you know, this work is busy to begin with, so I think that that would be the best way to tackle it. But I'm open to ideas, so if you have suggestions, please let me know. And then here were questions about telehealth. And uh our specialists providing telehealth services. So um I think I showed you some of the things that our related service providers were doing last week. I think I sent you some samples of physical therapy, occupational therapy, I showed you some videos that they're providing. Telehealth is really a specific service and it's through a medical model. So I I wanna tell you that it's ten hours of training, people would need to voluntarily participate in that training. And there were some real challenges for us as a district. Because our related service providers have licensing agency agents outside of. Desi, so Asher, for example, you know, certifies our speech and language pathologist. And they have a very prescriptive um expectation about how telehealth will happen. So there's some real um difficulties with staff, not really having offices and confidentiality. There were HIPAA and FERPA uh concerns. We're supposed to be able to evaluate the appropriateness of using teletherapy with students before we actually do it. In a remote learning. Environment, uh we don't have informed consent in order to do this. You know, the other thing is, we're in a, in about a, you know, three and a half hour a day. So within that timeframe, if you look at caseloads, there is no way our related service providers could provide one-to-one services through telehealth. With all the students on their caseload, a lot of times they're not doing just individual, they're doing small group. Um and they have large caseloads, so um there are some real concerns um about telehealth. And our ability to provide a medical model intervention in a school-based model. One of the things, I have been meeting with the CPAC co-chairs pretty consistently. And one of the ideas that came up, because I had shared some of the videos with you and the CPAC co-chairs. And they had a brilliant idea of would people be willing to share those uh lessons that have been provided um across the district? So I worked with Cindy Larson, um and we have had a tremendous outpouring of video lessons. Around social emotional, social skills, um occupational therapy. So if you go on the remote learning site, you will see all those related service providers have. You know, volunteer to, you know, they they call them low-rate videos, you know? But they've shared that with the entire district, so that's been terrific, so we've added some resources specifically for special education. I wanna talk a little bit about guidance and school adjustment counselor in this model, because I think that. Their role right now is very, very different. So for kids, if they were consistently checking in on some of those kids coming to school is the challenge. So being at home, they're much more comfortable in saying, I'm doing fine. But we have had a significant increase of kids that are experiencing some real challenges being at home. So they are kind of the be-all and-all of supporting everybody, so students, parents and families. And there are days they are feeling very overwhelmed by by the amounts of supports that they have to provide. So I have been meeting with them as a group bi-weekly, um and just kind of, we're sharing the challenges. We're sharing resources, we're sharing ourselves as supports. And really, in terms of the counseling, we're not doing a deep dive with students right now around, you know, personal types of issues. Our focus right now needs to be, how are students coping? What can we help them to improve their coping? What can we, you know, um do to help them practice some mindfulness activities and connection and physical activity? Because in school, we can talk about lots of things and we have a real opportunity then, in an hour, to go in and step into a classroom. And check in on a kid or walk into the lunchroom and say, are they sitting with that peer they had difficulty with? Or have they re-engaged in academic, and then we can check in with them even the next morning. And so I, we've really made a decision that we're not gonna be doing a deep dive into emotional things right now. But play a more supportive role. And they have, I'm telling you, they have been outstanding, the level of response, um connections, they've gone. And all the related service providers are part of Google meets, they're meeting up and going into classrooms with teachers and providing social skills lessons. The school adjustment counselors are going on to Google meets with the younger kids to do some connected activities. So I'm really proud of the effort, um I think it's really um a challenging role to be a related service provider. And to try to figure out how to best um implement the service. One of the things we kind of decided early on in the feedback, and I think you heard this earlier, was that. Parents were getting so many emails, right? I heard this, like, one of the parents said to me when I called, said, oh my god, I missed the gym teacher's email, I didn't even know that was a gym teacher. I was so busy working on the academics. And and I said, oh my god, it's, it it just kind of like dawned on me in that moment. That maybe as related service providers, we need to pick a different day to roll out the services and the supports that we're going to provide. So we decided that related service providers would send emails consistently on a Thursday. So that they wouldn't be getting thirteen emails in one day, because I can't, I I know what my inbox looks like right now. I can't imagine getting thirteen emails with all these different lessons for parents. And I think sending it out on Thursday and then knowing they can have a check-in in the week and work with the related service providers. Has been really, really helpful, because then they can look at the lesson and think about, when can I integrate that? You know, some of the parents with the school adjustment counseling, they see kids getting stressed, they're like, oh, we're gonna go watch a movie review with Mrs. Quinn. Let's go do that now, so they're using those activities as a little bit of a break from the academic um rigor. That's, you know, day-to-day for parents. So that's a long-winded answer to that, and I'm sure you'll have more questions, but I've really thought a lot about this. The other question that came my way was, um how are we managing progress reports for students? So um a- as you likely know, that we um, the final student report card will it um won't include grades. But rather, um educators are gonna highlight the academic accomplishments and engagements for students in areas of growth. So in my department, I have met with the eight groups across the district um pre-K to twenty-two. And we've talked about data points that we'll be sharing, um have kids come to Google meets? What has their check-in been like? Have they um sent work back? Have we gotten, so for some of our younger students, they are sending um videos of themselves or pictures of themselves participating in activities. So we're gonna use naturalized data points that we have right at our fingertips. How many, how many um check-ins did they ask for, how, what, if their response is, what kind of help have they received? We also added Lexia, so I know you heard the principals talk about that earlier, I went out and. Met with Lexia to provide, those are gonna give us some really good reading um benchmarks and information. I X L math will give us some really good math data. Our Eureka online math um program will give us some data, so we're gonna be writing progress reports on natural data. That we have at our fingertips and then, you know, the accomplishments and the work that students have done. So I was on um a classroom meet this week with my transitions program, they invite me sometimes to come. So they were doing safety in the kitchen, so I got to be part of that lesson this week. And they shared pictures of things they had made, recipes, um you know, just kind of safety tips in the kitchen. You know, checking the oven, using oven mitts, what if an oven mitt is wet? Should you, you know, just really thoughtful lessons. And these are students that we did, never did remote learning. And they are tremendously, A, enjoying the lessons, but able to use the technology. So we've even built their independence, which I think is a really positive skill. Because you know we're working towards employment for those students, meaningful employment. And we're seeing them implement a lot of those skills independently, so that's really a data point for us as well. So I think those are all the questions you sent to me, Kathy, that was probably a lot long-winded.
Well, I think they were very thorough and specific, and thank you, I think it's good information. To share, uh because, yeah, it's a logical question um about um the extended year program. And then what we are able to do or not do with regard to these tele, quote-unquote, telehealth things. So thank you, so at this point, I will um entertain uh questions, does anyone have any questions for Joan?
Thank you so much, Joan, that was really helpful. I have a um a quick question for you, and being not a special educator myself. When you say telehealth, I think that that, is that kind of like a capital T thing? Where um teachers who are not trained or um related service providers who aren't trained in that, they can't use telehealth? But is there kind of an alternative that they could use that is just like through Google Meet? Or something like that, is that allowed?
Well, I think we have to be careful because of the HIPAA and the FERPA. So telehealth is really that medical model to provide those types of related services. And so it it complies with HIPAA and with FERPA. And so I think that um I've at, people have asked me, like, why aren't we doing that one-to-one? And I think that there are challenges that come with that because of the training that's expected. And um this confidential, there's all kinds of concerns that come with it. And people are working at home, so can we maintain people's confidentiality? So we have used Google meets, um but with small group, even to provide like a small group speech lesson. We would obviously need parents to agree to that, and some parents don't want that, you know, disclose that their child's on an I E P. So it's really, um we've individualized um uh lessons for students. We've done video lessons, we've kind of gone at it through that venue. Instead of this tel- the telehealth model is not a school-based model.
And then Kathy, just to follow. So if we stay, if we put aside kind of the therapeutic services that are being provided. And just focus on the academic services that would typically be provided. What are we doing, um I know that the the methodology today is to push into classrooms as opposed to pulling kids out. So, but there is some pullout, so what what are we doing for ki-? And the reason why, I will preface this by saying that, in a recent conversation with several constituents. There was some um discontinuity between people who say. Oh, well, my, the special ed teacher is doing a small Google meet with three kids, my kid included, to do specialized instruction. And another parent said, my, my um special educator has not reached out to me. And so there was some disagreement, and I just wanted to perhaps help clarify for parents what the expectation, what they can expect if their child is on an I E P. Should they be getting specialized service from an uh cognitive or academic standpoint?
So our special educators all have office hours and they are working in concert, so they're looking at the general ed. Teachers' lessons and they may, they're accommodating what's being provided or modifying. So there might be a lesson that's being pushed out, but we are actually adjusting the reading level if the child is not reading at grade level. If it's a writing assignment, um there might be a reduced expectation in terms of what's expected. And graphic organizers might be um presented. If you look at the high school, we have um a Google classroom, so some students have individual Google classrooms. Because they need different types of check-ins with the special educator. Others are in that larger um Google classroom with a special educator saying, okay, this assignment was done. What questions do you have about this? So it's it's really different by every glit- grade level and what the needs are.
But I mean, by the I E P, there there do set, you know, a certain amount of hours, right?
Yes, so if you look at a service delivery grid, um we have B grid services, which is support in regular education. And then there are C grid services, I'm seeing Mike's daughter sneaking in, she's adorable. I'm sorry, um there are C grid services where it's small group pullout. So we have used our general ed and special ed teacher to work in small groups to kind of clarify some instructions or maybe reteach a lesson. We've used special ed teachers in related service providers, we've used paraprofessionals and special educators. To provide small group in terms of instruction, so, and the groups are blended, it can be regular ed students or special ed students. Because I think um because of the way you get remote learning, all kids sometimes have questions. So if they have similar questions, we wanna service everybody at this point and support them, right? So we might have them in a small group.
Um other questions for Joan? Mike?
Joan, thanks for um for taking those questions and thank you for answering them so thoughtfully. This is um less, really less a question on sped, but but obviously includes sped. I think as a district, um I think we have to be very considerate about. The, the. Emotional toll that this distance, the social distance. And and the the distance from peers, from adults. I mean, I see it with my kids, they have their moments where they just are fed up with, you know, not being able to contact or communicate. On a, on a real functional, productive level and. I I I think I I say this in my own district and I would certainly say it in my kids' district, that that's something that can probably um fly right under the radar. If we're not careful and it um, it's just something that I I really were, I've been worried about it since since day one. And I continue to see it um kind of grow as this, this, this period of time goes on. It it very, it concerns me and I I don't know that there are direct answers, but that's just something that I want to, you know.
Yeah, I, you know, I, you know, you, the social emotional piece is really um a passion of mine, I'm a trained social worker. And I think that, you know, um that that group is so thoughtful in what they've done. So we are all participating in training um this week and next week together to really talk about. Social emotional planning for all of our schools in the district when we return. And really talking with teachers about, um we can't forget that this time has happened and kids are gonna need different kinds of supports. And how can we blend in some of the learning into the classroom? Because I I agree with you, Mike, wholeheartedly, this, kids have been under a lot of pressure, it's been a lot of change, a lot of isolation. And I think we're, we've been all saying, like, just can't go back to business as usual. We have to be mindful of, um if kids are getting stuck, this can really create stress. So our goal is to kind of do a, a plan for each school to support all the students in the building.
Mike, I wanna give Brooke an opportunity to address your, your issue, go ahead, Brooke.
Thank you, and I and I, I'm just gonna spring from, from Joan, because we actually, Mike, we've been talking about this as administrative team now. Well, countless times at our admin meetings, so I think that this is uh, this is at the forefront of our thinking right now. As we go back i- in whatever way that we go back. So, you know, Joan's giving you a very specific, but I would tell you that we we are thinking very broadly and very specifically within the district. It is not lost on us, and I I too am incredibly concerned about this generation of learners having gone through this.
Yeah, and and I would just add, not that this is um a, any kind of rebuttal, but you know, it's it's very easy to measure. Well, it's relatively easy to measure academic progress with grades and we can provide feedback. But, you know, how do you gauge where our kids are emotionally? But, you know, how do you gauge where our kids are emotionally? And what impact does it, does it have in the short term and the long term?
Right. And I think that we're looking to do some training to bring those teaching tools to really check in with kids and have meaningful check-ins of where they are every day. Because I know that the longer this has gone on, personally, it's become more and more difficult for me. Because I think that I'm used to being at work every day. I'm used to seeing kids. I'm used to engaging with my admin team. You know, I'm home in this house alone most days, 12 to 14 hours. It's really hard. I feel like this week, it really has hit me in a way I hadn't thought about. So I want to be really honest, like I'm very, and I shared that with the School Adjustment Counselors this past week. So I said to everyone, how are you doing? And they were all quiet. And I said, okay, I'll go first. And I did that specifically because they are the people that are taking care of our kids during the day and really checking in. And I, we're, we're going to have to have boots on the ground, all of us, and be out walking around and checking in as kids are coming in and seeing how they're doing in class. And if they're quiet or withdrawn, we're the people that are going to pick that up. And I think that we need to be able to push some of that training out. Like Brooke said, like we need to work on this as a group and think, we can't forget this time happened, I guess, is my quote all the time. Because it is going to have impact. And I think that we, we're going to need, we're going to need more social emotional supports than we've needed in the past. I actually have a meeting with the high school tomorrow to talk more specifically about some planning for the high school students. Because I think this has been tremendously difficult for them as well. So, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, it's not lost on me. I did get, I, I have an email at the end. I'd like to share with you a perspective of students. So I'll take other questions. But I, it, it was interesting that this came into a School Adjustment Counselor last week. I thought I would share it tonight.
Other questions for Joan? Okay, Joan, you want to share that with us?
I do. So this is to Mrs. Dur. She was checking in with a student to say, hi there. How are you doing? Tell me what's happening. And the student writes back, I'm okay. I've been having a hard time finishing my work by Friday. I've been doing one to two subjects a day, which seems to work for me, but I end up sometimes getting stuck. Not because the work is too hard, but because I have an especially distracting household and my mind is distracted by that house. I know there isn't a solution to this other than getting it together. Working in a building with quiet rooms, organized seating, and people with degrees in education is a lot different than working in my kitchen with the song Let It Go playing in the background over and over and having macaroni and cheese thrown at me while being cootied through junior year. So, you know, that's from one of our students. You know, it kind of, it really, you know, made us laugh out loud. And then she writes, wishing I was an only child. So just, you know, this is really happening for students and they are really expressing to our guidance and School Adjustment Counselors what's happening and feeling comfortable to do that. So I think that that has been tremendously helpful, the connection with the kids and them, you know, giving us their, something from their perspective. So I just wanted to share that tonight because the student allowed me to share that with you.
Thank you, thank you. So, um, Joan, thank you so much.
Thanks for having me there.
Last meeting. And then with all the follow-up. And folks, if you continue to have questions, just send them to me and I will make sure Joan gets them. And, and thank you for your, your, everyone, for your thoughtful approach and the, and the concern about a very important part of the, the, the programming for many, many kids and, and how it's being addressed during this time. So thank you, Joan.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Ta-ta.
Bye.
Okay, so now we are up to my updates. So I wanted to talk about the superintendent's evaluation. And I had a conversation with Dorothy Presser to see how this has been handled with other school districts. You may recall that we were scheduled to have a training, an in-person training on March 25th. And we have had to reorganize and rethink a number of things. But what I'd like to propose to you, and then I'll, I'd like to hear what you have, what your thoughts are, that we proceed with an online training with Dorothy at our next meeting on June 3rd. Now, I think that we would all benefit from the training. We have folks who are doing this for the first time. But I think sometimes it helps if we're all together so that we can talk about the experiences that we've had in previous years. I've talked to Brooke about this. And what I am asking her to do is to submit a, have a self-evaluation. Brooke, part of the process is that the superintendent submits a self-evaluation based on the goals. And you can go back to our meeting in October when we saw the goals and, and talked about them and, and how we're going to measure them. So we get her self-evaluation the day before the, the training with, with Dorothy. So you'll have a chance to look at it. And then as we're working with Dorothy, if we have... That is adorable. I, I haven't, I love seeing people hugged because like, I can't hug anybody except my husband and I'm pretty much hugged out with him. But anyway, I miss kids and my grandkids, never mind. Okay, so anyway, so you get it on the second, you read it, you see what the format is. And last year, we started having the superintendent write her self-evaluation in the same format, using the same template where we write her, um, evaluation. So you'd get it on the second. We'd work with Dorothy on the third. And then you would have between the third and the 12th to send me your, um, your, your evaluation of the superintendent. Now, as I get them, I mean, one of the things you can do is as you're writing your evaluation of the superintendent, if you have questions, you need the answer from her, you ask her directly and she'll respond to you directly. So you'll have some time to, um, to ask her questions as you're writing your evaluation. And then I would want those to me by June 12th. And I would prepare the final evaluation to present at our meeting on June 17th. So just by way of review, Brooke will complete the self-evaluation by June 2nd. At our meeting on June 3rd, Dorothy Presser will do a Zoom training with us on writing the superintendent's evaluation. You will have her self-evaluation to refer to as we're going through this. Between the 3rd and the 12th, you will write your evaluation of the superintendent. And then have your, your deadline for getting it to me is June 12th. As the chair, it's my job to compile the, the, um, the evaluations of the members into one final document. Now, I know this is in the abstract right now. It'll make more sense when you get the information from Brooke and also when Dorothy does the presentation. So what questions or even concerns do you have at this point? Does that sound like a plan? I really don't want to let this go over this summer. I thought in previous years, that last meeting in June was a retreat for us. I think we just need to, to finish the year and we'll have new members by, by August. And I think we can have our retreat in August, hopefully in person. But we'll know what we can do as, as time goes on. So that's, that's how I'm planning things out right now. At that June 17th meeting, technically, my reign has expired. If we had had the, the, um, we, we, by, yeah, by May 1st, yeah, we should have known by today who our new school committee members are. This would have been our, our first meeting of the new term and to elect a new chair. So we're going to need to do that. And I would suggest we do that on the 17th as well. So a lot of information I just threw out at you. Thoughts, questions, concerns? Anyone? Even? Yes.
Still doesn't have its town election until the 27th of June.
Right, right. So that's why, I mean, so do you want to?
You, you, you won't have a new school committee by then.
Right. So should we wait until like a, a meeting we have in August to elect a chair?
Or at least we have one right after the town election.
But we don't have a meeting yet.
What about the other, what about the other towns? When, when is Lancaster?
All the same.
Same date.
All the same day at the exact same time.
Yeah.
And then you don't have your new members certified yet.
Right. So that's what I'd say. They would not participate in writing the superintendent's.
But what about?
Evaluation. And I know, where's Brett? It's going to break your heart, I know. But you don't have to write her a value, unless you want to. But I would like you to come to the workshop. So, but yeah, so Stephen, if we're not going to have our new member, we got to write the, the evaluation anyway. So we can.
No, that I understand. Understanding evaluation. But I'm, I'm asking you about the election with new, with new people. You can't really do that until after the 27th.
Sure. But we would do that. Are, are you saying we need to have a, our last meeting is June 17th? Okay? So are you saying that you think we should have another meeting just to do housekeeping when the new members go on board?
We have to reelect our chairman and vice chairman and whatever.
You're not re-electing anybody.
We have to elect.
Oh, yeah. I thought I heard you say re-elect.
No, we have to elect our chairman, vice chairman, secretary. And that has to happen, that can't happen until after the 27th of June.
Okay, I get it now. So we may have a special meeting once we know who the players are, just to do some housekeeping. Okay? But I will check back with you guys before that. All right. Now, what about the plan for writing the superintendent's evaluation and the workshop with Dorothy on the 3rd?
That's fine.
Everybody? Mike?
Joe, I didn't see your thumb.
I acquiesced by my silence.
So let me ask you this. If we're going to do that on the 3rd, could we start? Could we do a workshop from 5:00 to 6:00? Or start the meeting at 5:00? What are your thoughts? Can, can people do 5:00?
Where else are we going to be?
Well, I don't know about you. Can I say to Dorothy, we'll do it from 5:00 to 6:00 and then we'll start our regular meeting? And I have no idea what the agenda is going to be, but I'm sure we'll figure something out. All right, all right. 5 o'clock. Okay, so let me move ahead with that. So I had that. And then the other thing, excuse me. I have to turn the lights on in here. Okay, so, I don't know. Are you, is your hand up, Brooke? Or you just?
No, I turned the light because the light was glaring.
Oh, okay. Now it's getting dark out. So I had shared with you guys this, NASC sent it out that the Boston School Committee had a resolution in supporting increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K-12 education. And there is a lot of wherethes before you get to the actual resolve at the very, very end. And I recall that, I think, 2008, 2009, the last time there was a, an economic problem that this, uh, school districts did something similar. So this is what the city of Boston created. When I went through it, um, in terms of if it, it would need some heavy editing if we decided to pursue this, I've indicated that we'd have to edit because they don't, they retain the Boston paragraphs 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, and 11. And then some other paragraphs would work for us if we took out the word urban. So I'm checking in tonight to see where folks are. And I checked with Dorothy about if she's hearing anything from other communities that are going to take action in this way. And I quite frankly, think that people are dealing with a lot of other stuff. Uh, but I wanted to get your take on this. If this is something that we would want to pursue as a school committee with the proper editing and looking at and then sending out. So what are folks' thoughts on this? Mike?
Just to be clear, this is just a symbolic support of, of the resolution. It's, it's, it's nothing actionable, correct?
No, it's, it's like, it's almost like petitioning. But it is, it's their specific, their resolution is specific. Many of the paragraphs read with regard to items that are specific to the Boston Public Schools. We would make them specific to ours. And it's just indicating that you're aware of all this stuff. And if there's money to be passed out, we want some. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. Steve says no. Yes, Steve?
I think, I think it's a waste of our time.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay, good. Leah?
Um, it seems to me, as I'm reading through this, that it's really speaking to all of the money that the city of Boston has been robbed of because of having to transition to remote learning. But the resolution is asking for budget reconciliation for next year. Is that right?
I think they're looking for, if there's money that comes out of the federal government to be distributed to states, that a portion of that money should be earmarked for education. Now, if that is the case, then, I mean, our slice of the cheese might be small compared to Boston. But it's, it's money. And I don't know if they, are they, I remember the last time this happened, I was in Concord. And the term that they used, they were going to give money to school districts for shovel-ready projects. And, you know, I wasn't in the position to really, you know, be up on or in on that. But that was the terminology that was used. So if there's federal money to be given out, I think this is really advocating, or the gist of it is, to advocate for it trickling down to schools, districts.
So shouldn't the, shouldn't this come through the commissioner? Or like, what are other superintendents saying about this?
I don't know, Brooke?
It, there's not a lot of talk about this right at this point in time amongst the superintendents. But in all fairness, I think it's just because the superintendents are so heavily involved in so much else. I think that that's, this is just not on our front burner at all right now. We're, I mean, our goals really are just to get through this year and we're looking to next year. And, and that's taking up an inordinate amount of time right now.
Yeah, yeah. Any other thoughts?
I think it's something that.
Oh, excuse me, Elaine did this. Elaine?
No problem. I mean, I, I'm all for it. I think that next year financially is going to be bad unless the federal government steps in somehow. So one way or another, I think pressure, I personally think pressure on the federal government to include some sort of stimulus or aid package or whatever you want to call it for public education in the state. It's going to be really important.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Leah?
I was just going to say that, um, I don't know that we are the pressure point here. I don't know that us putting this out has a whole lot of effect. It might just like float into ether. I would more like to see our efforts be placed on pressuring our state legislators to, to spearhead some sort of statewide something.
Okay. And I think the idea is that it wouldn't just be the Shaw Regional School District sending this out. I think the idea was to get school districts from across the state to engage in creating one of these and sending them. And it doesn't, sending it to the federal government does. And it doesn't, sending it to, um, the federal government does not mean you can't send it to the state as well. Um, but I just wanted to get a sense from the group, obviously, if it's something we wanna pursue, um, I would work with somebody, not sure who, uh, to edit it to reflect, um, our district, and then bring it back to the committee for feedback or ideas or whatever. Mary?
Did this come through, um, MASC at all?
The, um, the Boston, uh, School Committee, um, asked MASC to distribute it to the communities they work with.
Okay, so I certainly think it's 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 worthwhile, you know, I agree with it. Uh, it might be for not a lot of effect, um, but, you know, it's it's the small things that that we can do. Um, people aren't coming to us and asking our our opinions, and and on the federal level, I don't think they are, I haven't, nobody's been asking me.
Betsy didn't reach out to you?
Not yet, so, um, but this is one of the things that that we can do, we can, we can petition. And and so if it's not too much of a burden, and, uh, and I'd be willing to help you do any kind of editing on this, um, then I I I think, why not?
Any other thoughts? Leah?
Um, Kathy, I'm just wondering, who's the audience, who would we be kinda submitting it to, just to the the newspaper, or what?
No, I think you send it to the, um, they voted, and I'm sorry, I, it's it's, it's supposed to be directed to, um, it's in support of increased federal support and stimulus funding. So I would, I would think that it would trickle up through, um, our, um, our national representatives. But I would find that out, but I just, I remembered it, I I it stuck with me because I remembered going through this in two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten, whenever the last thing was, um, and this came through, so I just wanted to uh, test the waters here and see, Joe, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll just say, and as far as my colleague from Stowe, Mr. Rubenstein is concerned, I I couldn't agree with him more, I think it is more just blowing, you know, just blowing in the the wind, uh, but if you're so inclined to do this, and, uh, my suggestion, just one member of the committee.
Yes.
Two pages of recitals, I mean, you get down to the resolution, it's just one paragraph, and I think our congressional delegations are well aware of our needs, and I would make it short, sweet, but I would also want to include, you know, our state legislators as well if we're gonna do this, so, I I don't think it's just the federal government's responsibility, I think it's the state government's responsibility as well, so.
Yeah, no, I would agree.
Do it.
Anybody else? Okay, so Mary, if you are inclined, why don't we give it a shot? And, um, we can connect offline and and talk about it if if that's okay, and then we'll just bring it back to the committee, and then I'll do some more research about the effective way to communicate it, I'll talk to Dorothy and and see what else she knows, I haven't spoken to her about this in like, just, it must be three weeks now, so, we'll get back. That's all that I have, now we have, um, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute, where is, um? Didn't Pat have a report on here?
No, there was no report from Pat at this, at this particular meeting.
I thought there was a, um, in in the meeting materials, there was the, um.
The audit, and that's the auditor who's.
All right, yeah, yeah, right, thank you, so superintendent update?
And I'm, I just, I recognize that Mr. Lowe's here, and I know that we should be in executive session right now, so I think what I'm going to do is just almost do one-liners through this, because I know that everybody can read, so I'll just touch base really quickly. The statewide meetings, I just wanna say that those continue all the time, and, um, we have so many of those, um, and every time we have them, it's like three to five hundred people, and so we really have a good idea of what's going on around the rest of the state, whether it's academics, budget, whatever it it is, graduation, whatever, so, you know, when people say, well, this sounds so swinging like that, we normally already know that, um, so I think that the statewide meetings have been outstanding for us to stay connected and and cooperate with each other. Uh, reopening right now, um, you know, I I know we got a an email from a parent this week, just, you know, basically saying, just reopen, like, you know, please don't have to send their kid, their parents don't have to send their kids, and it's like, it's not that simple, you know, i- if if um, you just go and open the doors, um, even for us to, you know, get everything organized for the parents to pick up all of the students' things was a huge undertaking to orchestrate, so reopening, um, i- it's just, we just have really no idea right now. Um, and and we've been told, but yet again, that we'll have some sense of direction in the next, uh, within the next several weeks. Uh, but keep in mind that it will take us a period of time to plan that reopening specific to Neshoba Regional School District around the parameters that the state lays out. So I I see our summer as being, uh, work-intensive. Uh, DBUS, uh, you know that we've been working on a contract, uh, for for really months now. Uh, the regional working group that was working with that is very, very close to finalizing, uh, a new, uh, uh, contract with DBUS, so we're delighted, we think that that collective group, um, we're not at the point in time where where it's finished, but we're very, very close, so we're very pleased with that. Um, MSBA Awareness Committee, and Leah, I'm gonna turn this over to you in a second here. Uh, so this group has been meeting, uh, several times, and, um, I I feel really good about the direction that we're headed, and we're just really kind of amping up as we look forward to the, um, town meetings and whatnot, so we've got two students, two teachers, uh, two school committee members, and Todd and I both sit on that committee as well. And I just wanna thank everyone for for dropping whatever they're doing to come to a meeting, um, because sometimes it's very short notice, because we, we don't find out to a- about our state meetings until sometimes the day before, so our schedules have to be so flexible, so that we try to fit all the other meetings around all those statewide meetings. So this particular group, for example, sometimes it's like the night before, can we all get together tomorrow at four o'clock or whatever, so I just wanna thank, uh, Leah and Elaine for your your support on that group, really appreciate that. So Leah, I'm gonna ask you to just speak for a a minute or two about that as well.
Uh, so the committee is really focused right now on bringing an awareness campaign to the three communities so that they understand the, uh, article on the town warrants requesting the feasibility study funding. So we're gonna be holding three, um, kind of listening sessions, dialogue, public hearings, whatever you wanna call it, next week, and those will happen on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night for Stowe, Bolton, and Lancaster. And we'll be sending out more information on that, we really hope everybody will join us, because we have a lot of information to share to help build awareness as to the importance of the vote for the feasibility studies, so that we can move toward making our high school everything our kids need and deserve for their education.
Leah, can I ask a question? Um, so. How will information about these be, um, I I mean, clearly, we have a way to communicate with families in the three districts, but to the community at large, how will people be made aware? And, um, I'm assuming it'll be a Zoom format?
Yeah, so this is just one of the prongs of the awareness campaign, so we are gonna do these forums on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week. But, uh, Brooke and other members of the committee are using other mediums to reach out to members of the community, and maybe Brooke, you can speak to that.
Yeah, I think that there are a number of different ways that we're looking at, for example, we, um, this is, a- and I think Leah has articulated it so so precisely. I think we're looking at different prongs of how to reach out to different groupings, and for example, another prong will be school councils, and we're gonna be looking at setting things up, and Leah's, um, Leah took, um, Elaine's slide deck, Elaine created kind of a draft of a slide deck, and then Leah took that slide deck and just made this beautiful, fuzzy uh, presentation, we included, she she did a lovely job of embedding the birds into that um, as well as our student presentation, because we decided that actually, even though it wasn't finished, it was actually perfect for what the the spot that it landed in. So I think it's just a great, a great thing, we've already reached out to our newspapers, for example. Uh, we've got other, um, things in the, you know, kind of in the back burner right now that we continue to work at, we have a um, memo that Dr. McGuire and I are working on that will be going out on Friday to our our parents and our families. So I think we've got all kinds of different prongs here that are at play, we're doing the best we can, given the situation that we're in.
Sure, thank you. Um, oh, wait, Stephen, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question, um. Half the electorate in Stowe are seniors and or close to seniors, how are you getting them to watch this presentation? Because they're the ones who show up at town meetings and vote.
I mean, so we definitely.
Don't do electronics, because they're not, you know.
Yeah, we we, so, we talked about that at our meeting, and so the town elect, everybody going to town meeting is so very important, because all three towns need to authorize the spending on this feasibility study, and there's really no time for error. So you, everybody has to go to this town meeting if they're interested in moving this, um, forward. So, um, you know, we, even if you don't have children who are gonna benefit from, say, a some sort of construction project at the high school, this is what is absolutely best for all the children of Neshoba. And so I think once everybody hears our message and understands the purpose, they'll be convinced. So how do we address people who say are not going to get on a Zoom call? So what I did was I took the presentation and I narrated it, and that's gonna be put on the public access station. And we are putting something in the newspaper, we're developing a pamphlet, so hopefully we will reach all of the people who have a say in this, now that said, who shows up to town meeting is also a total yard sale right now, so, you know, these times are very difficult, we hope that people will, you know, see clear to find their way into these town meetings and, um, vote in favor of that article.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, thank you, Leah.
Thank you, Leah.
So the next thing for me, a collection of student belongings, as I was just mentioning earlier, uh, this has been quite a mammoth undertaking for, uh, for everyone that that's been involved in orchestrating this. Um, we we wanna extend a special note of thanks to our administrators, our secretaries, and the facility and custodians. The members, uh, organize this, we we worked at this as a collective group, the principals, Dr. McGuire, myself, uh, Rob Frieswick, and, um, we had a couple meetings collectively, and then we started to kind of go individually, so the individual specificities have been left up to the the principles of those buildings, because they all have different flow space, you know, the the traffic flow and that kind of thing. So, uh, you'll, so parents can expect to see something and hear something from their parents within, uh, within, from their principals within the next couple of days of what they can expect. If there are problems and you just absolutely cannot hit that time or whatever, please give us a call or send us an email, particularly send it to the principal and, uh, and or secretary, and I've seen people make some adjustments already. But we need to know, because right now, your your students' bags are located in a very specific position. So if if you can't make it, then we need to go and get that and move it to wherever it's going to be. Um, so that's it for the collection of student belongings, and Dr. McGuire, we're turning it over to you for super quick remote learning and continued virtual PD.
Sure, and some of this I spoke about earlier, so similarly, I'll be quick, um, we're continuing, you know, to unfold and un- um, enhance our remote learning module, like, as I mentioned, um, earlier, we continue to add several digital tools to the online instructional tools tab on our website, I direct people really to that digital tools link on the remote learning, uh, website, because we've got well over two hundred digital applications, anything from Khan Academy to Discovery Zone, um, to Newzella, that are all enhancements that we continue to add on our learn platform, and they're there and approved for anyone to be using. Um, in addition, as I mentioned, we opened up the Google, we're gonna be opening up the Google email accounts for grades three to five with tutorials, um, in support for families at home, this will enhance the two-way communication that we keep speaking about. We've added video conferencing tools for our administrators with webinar add-ons, so all of our administrators are gonna be able to hold uh, virtual meetings with parents, um, with these webinar add-ons, so that for registrations, kindergarten registrations, et cetera, our our administrative leadership will be able to hold those kinds of virtual meetings now. Um, I mentioned we've updated our K through two seesaw virtual platen- platform to premium access for our parents, teachers, and students to utilize in our remote module. Um, and our online engagement continues to be tracked, particularly six through twelve on the Google Classroom, we continue to have an over ninety percent engagement rate with our kids. Um, the last piece is that our school registrations, all school registration forms will take place online, uh, next year, and all essential forms will be able to be uploaded and submitted through our Power School platform, so we're excited about that. Um, that move forward, and that's the last thing, we continue with virtual professional development. Um, teaching and learning continues to, you know, push out and promote new professional development opportunities for teachers and administrators, uh, particularly around remote learning, virtual learning, and social emotional learning and transitioning, particularly as we go into the summer and into a new year. Uh, particularly MEAS, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, has offered a tremendous amount of webinars and workshops for our administrators and teachers that have been fantastic, as well as Research for Better Teaching located over in Acton. Um, there's been a lot of resources offered, a lot of sharing and collaboration amongst a lot of educators across, really across the nation, so we've been attending. And then finally, we're currently in the process of developing our Summer Academy, in which we'll be offering and delivering professional development on those same topics for teachers specifically focused on virtual learning, virtual instructional training for teachers as we, as we look towards the fall, and then again, that support for social emotional learning as it's related to um, our first goal in our district improvement plan.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Todd or for Brooke? Elaine?
Um, I just wanted to make a a quick suggestion, something that Joan said sort of triggered it in my head, and she posted those um, great videos, and I actually went onto the website to look at the special education page with those like list of videos. Um, it would be great to see a video bank like that for other disciplines, you know, academic disciplines, reading, writing, that sort of thing, um, to take advantage of the teachers that are doing the videos, um, for other kids to be able to watch, so maybe it's not their classroom teacher doing it, but I likely there's gonna be a teacher that they're familiar with, someone they've seen in the building, um, to be able to take it, for more students to be able to take advantage of some sort of technologies, like, for example, my daughter knows Mrs. Godbout, Mrs. Godbout has a video online right now about tying your shoes. And that like resonated with my daughter more than me trying to teach her, because she's like, oh, I know Mrs. Godbout, I see her sometimes in the in the hallway. Um, so it would be great to just take advantage of the content that's already there, um, and put it for families to be able to use as well, I think it'd be really helpful, especially over the summertime, when, you know, you might see a slide, or might, people might need some uh, refresher classes, my cousin teaches math in Lemonster, and she's been posting the videos of her lessons as well, just like on Facebook for anybody to use. Um, so it would, it'd just be nice to see a collection of something like that.
Maybe we create a new link on the remote learning site that's just specifically tied to, you know, videos.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, other, other questions for Brooke or Todd? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, Elaine, would you make the motion?
Uh, yes, I move to approve the consent agenda of May twentieth, twenty twenty, containing the warrants of May twenty second, twenty twenty, and the meeting minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty.
We can have a second? Second, Leah's second, all those in favor? Oh, we have to do it, I think we, because we're remote, we have to do it by role, is that correct? Okay, Leah?
Yes.
Kathy, yes? Um, Joseph?
Yes.
Um, Elaine?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Brett? Um, Brett?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, Steve?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, so we will be moving into executive session, Elaine, would you make that motion, please?
Uh, yes, I move to go into the executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declared Unit A, to includes Superintendent Clenchey, Human Resources Director Anne Marie Stojka, Bolton Town Administrator Dawn Lowe, and District Leader Council Mike McCarr, School Committee Brett Collins will be excused from executive session, will adjourn in executive session.
Thank you, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Leah's second, okay, roll call, Leah?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Joseph?
Yes.
Okay, Brett, his thumb is up, so, thank you, Brett, um, Elaine?
Yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Very good, okay, Brett, oh, Mary, I'm sorry, Mary.
Yes, yes, thank you, okay, Brett.
Okay, Brett, thank you very much. We'll see you. Take care. Bye, Pat. Um, bye, Alita.